Just to be sure, we've got four Jeff Schellinger. All right. Um. And officially, I've called to order, excuse me, I've called to order the May 10th, 2021 meeting of the Ashford Planning and Zoning Committee. Um, so, uh, next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do we have a, any motion for the?
Motion to accept.
Jerry motions to accept. Do we have a second? That was Catherine Sampson.
Yep.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And I would like to call out Valerie for doing a good job capturing everything.
Very good. Thank you, Valerie. Any abstentions?
I abstained, Alex.
Alex was not here, so he needs to abstain. Thank you, Alex. All right. Moving on to, um, public comment. Um, I see here the members of the public are B and T guarantee. Um, any comments from anyone out there?
No, just, just plugging in, learn, living and learning like the last time. Thank you for all that you do.
Being informed. Thank you. Thank you for taking an interest in attending. We appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's got to have fans. Um. Okay, moving on to bills. Any bills received, Mr. Secretary Alex?
I know I don't have any.
Okay. Um, on to correspondence. Um, the single item I believe we received, oh, excuse me, there's multiple items, but it's all coming from the Mansfield Planning and Zoning, and it's mostly courtesy referrals. Uh, which is again, part of the regional, uh, NICOG, correct, uh, all the different groups to, um, for neighboring towns, uh, giving information. And if you have not had the opportunity, I can just hit the high points on each one. Uh, one is a special permit application for a mixed use development in Mansfield on Stores Road for 399 residential units and about 21,000, uh, square foot of commercial area. Uh, the second one is a zoning map amendment for rezoning about 2,600 acres of flood hazard area into planned business area. And again, there are more particulars on the second page of each one of those, should you wish to explore that. Uh, the third one is an amendment to the Articles of the Mansfield Zoning Regulations Regarding Maximum Building Height for Townhouses. And the fourth one is a nine-month moratorium on the establishing of, uh, of implementing cannabis establishments in Mansfield. And that is in reference to the pending legislation or whatever's going through the legislature now for the legalization of marijuana in Connecticut. And it's, if it were to come through, it would come through for July 1, and they felt that wasn't enough time uh, to allow for proper, uh, review and, uh, input from other towns, other sources. So they put a nine-month moratorium should that legislation go through.
Jeff, I've got a couple of comments on that. One, Mansfield seems to be moving forward with increasing the height. Uh, you know, areas, this case is residential, but the industrial is also up there at 45 feet. The other issue is we really do not have a permitted use for cannabis, uh, sales. Uh, whether or not, when we do not have it as a permitted use, that means it can't happen. We ought to talk about that, but maybe we should be thinking proactively, you know, prohibiting it much like Mansfield is doing, at least for the, you know, near-term future, since we are right next door to them.
Okay, um. What I would like to then recommend is if we could bring that up for the, as a potential agenda item for next month, so members can look into some information and bring that back with them for a, uh, proper discussion on that.
Sounds fine.
Okay, very good.
Jeff, I have a question. Just out of, for information, um, for those first three items in Mansfield, were those all for the same development? I couldn't, I couldn't figure it out.
The first two looked like they were referring to the same addresses on Stores Road. Uh, I'm not sure, because I think I did go into the third page, or excuse me, the second page on the one regarding height requirements for townhouses. Um.
That looked like it had a different, uh, might be a different developer. I wasn't sure. It doesn't matter.
You know, the first, the first two are dealing with the same development, I believe.
Yeah, okay.
The, the change in the height is a change to the land use regulations in general, not tied specifically to a certain development.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't believe it. I don't believe it wasn't a, uh, application amendment.
Yeah, they had had previously the ability to, uh, go from 40 to 45, uh, on a, as a special occasion, and they decided to make it 45 as the standard.
All right. Uh, thank you, Dick. Okay, uh, moving on to unfinished business and, uh, uh, first is the update on the Lake District Regulations and survey update. And to start to us, the man with the plan, uh, Mike is going to share some of the results with us and some of the, uh, deep dive that was done to, uh, identify some key issues, hopefully coming up and, uh, comparisons between the two Lake Districts. So Mike, please inform us.
All right, I will try. Um, so we closed the survey. Um, we had a total of 72 responses. Um, so I will, you know, we did, it wasn't a very long survey, so I'll buzz through basically these, the compilation of the results. And then, um, I think that the last two questions, which were more open-ended, or at least the last one, what I can do is, it kind of pull that out and I can send it if you guys want to read it. 62% of the respondents were from Lake Chaffey, 38% were from Ashford Lake. Um, 80% were, um, renter, uh, sorry, full-time residents. Um, and then we had a small percentage, about 8% were seasonal. Um, and then the rest were scattered between, um, either just elsewhere in town or, um, I think there were one or two rentals just that rent the property. Um, so the, obviously the vast majority lived, lived there year-round. Um, one of the questions we asked was, in your experience of the current zoning regulations to include lot size setbacks, building height, et cetera, appear to be restrictive and/or create barriers for homeowners who seek to reasonably improve their properties. So 56% said yes. Um, the current zoning regulations are restrictive. 40% said that they're appropriate. And about 5% said they're, they're, um, not restrictive enough. Um. We asked them how they feel about the layout of their specific, the layout and density. Um, and 37% felt that the, um, current layouts should allow for minor increases, which we, which we suggested was the expansion of an existing home. Um, 36% feel that it's, it's appropriately, appropriately developed as is. 25% feel it's already too developed. Um, only one respondent felt that there should be an allowance for broad increases to density. Um. 47%. Um, as a way, well, the question was, as a way to allow for the improvement of existing homes within the association, do you feel the commission should allow? And then we gave them footprint expansion by reducing setbacks, building height expansion on existing footprints. We allowed them to choose, you know, one or both, or, or no expansions at all. 47% chose A and B, thought both should be something that should be considered.
I'm sorry, what was that percentage, Mike?
47.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, you're going to send the results of all this to everyone.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to create some graphs, but I will extend the individual stuff. Um, 22% felt that no expansion should be allowed beyond what's existing. Um, 15% said just setback expansion. And 15% said just go up and basically allow only height increases, but no footprint increases. And then again, almost 50% said both. Let me just hit the highlights, so you don't have to keep listening to me, um, for the rest of these. How do you feel about the heightened number of stories? 37% basically said that partial increases should be allowed. Um. And that they need, and then 26% specifically said, we need to look at allowing increases to height. Um, so it seems like some of these are trending towards not really wanting to use up more land, but wanting to allow people to create more space if they need to. Um, the next question got into water quality. Um. And acknowledging that water quality isn't important and how mu, and asking how much the commission should focus on developing standards for war, water quality as it relates to things such as stormwater runoff and impervious surface, surfaces or low-impact development. 50% said that the commission should prioritize water quality over development. Um, 41% felt that water quality was important, but that it shouldn't become a barrier to development. Um. And then a small percentage, um, felt that water quality wasn't a primary focus. Um, 43% think that water quality currently is good. Um, 30% think water quality is fair but declining. Um, and 20% think it's improving. Um, and then we basically had two open-ended questions. One was an open-ended, tell us what you think the most important issue facing your lake area is. Um, and then basically, is there something that you'd like us to, to know? Allowing them to tell us, um, you know, what they think is important. And I would say in skimming this, a lot of this has to do with the Health Department and septics. Um, a lot of concerns about septic and failing septics and old septic tank and how to deal with that. Um, and then we allowed them to submit their, their, um, email addresses if they wanted to be kept in the loop as to, you know, when the regs were developed and public hearings and 42, 42 people want to have notification when the, the commission considers the, the language. And that's it.
So with the open-ended questions, Mike, the, um, you said that the, uh, Health Department slash Septic System Issues was the, uh, number one, uh, response? Overall, it seemed, just giving that.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like there's a couple, there's probably three major components. One is sort of the environmental issues related to, you know, septic and failing septics and those types of things. Um, one was water quality, specifically a lot of comments related to weeds in the lake, which, which obviously is not really a P and Z thing. And then, um, property, property preservation, blight, um, neglect, abandoned properties, those were some of the other things that we kind of saw a lot of, a lot of comments on, but I'm going to try to extract these and, and see if I can get them over to everybody.
Yep, and Mike, the issue of weeds is directly related to phosphates going into the lake. Because phosphates give rise to more algae blooming weeds.
Um, yes, that's correct. I hear at Lake Chaffey, uh, we have a, uh, we tell people not to use fertilizer on their lawns. Because that does, uh, when it rains, it'll wash into the lake. And I think most people have been abiding by that.
We do it like Ashford Lake as well.
The, I think I said this last month, but I think the overriding, uh, issue would be for this commission is to ensure that the regulations that are being done for the lake areas are done in a way that we preclude us getting into a situation where the state deep mandates sewers in those areas. Uh, because that would be a significant cost impact to the town. Recognizing, and I, I went through a lot of the building permits that were issued over the past five, 10 years, and a lot of the additions that were put on were kind of like passed off without a lot of due diligence. Uh, I think we need to make sure that any, uh, addition that is proposed for any of the properties on the lake include going through the Eastern Highlands Health District. Because if you add a bathroom or a bedroom or the like, the septic system needs to be able to support that. So, you know, you can't just willy-nilly put additions onto the property without taking into account the septic system.
Yeah, so I, I, one thing that I would just mention probably now is a good time. The Building Department, the Building Official cannot issue a permit if, if it's for something like that without a Health Department signature. So he, he needs zoning and health. So if any of those things were to happen, um, they would have to demonstrate that a B100A had been, had been reviewed and approved by Eastern Highlands. Um, so I don't know how long that process requirement has been in place in Connecticut. I don't, you know, it, it may not have been all that long, but, but that is required now.
Yeah. Without pointing fingers, it, uh, I found a lot of the, the building permits were simply issued from the Building Department without going anywhere beyond that in the past. Uh, what's being done today, uh, I would hope that would not be the case. And I think especially for a lot of the accessory buildings, they were, as I drove around Lake Chaffey in particular, I saw many properties with, uh, one, two, three accessory buildings on the property. A lot of the properties with, uh, paved driveways. So the impervious, uh, percentage of the property was very, very high. And, and that, that makes the runoff going into the lake much more probable. So I, I think I, I respectfully think that it's good that we reach out and get the opinions of the lake residents. But I think we also need, need to make sure we're protecting the town.
Uh, Dick, here at Lake Chaffey, we test the water. Um, we're starting it this month, and, uh, our counts are extremely low.
We know.
State gets concerned.
No.
Uh, our, our readings are in the single digits. And, uh, the state doesn't get concerned until it approaches 300.
Ashford Lake tests the water too, but I think one of the issues is it's not being tested after a heavy rainfall. When things would be more likely to be, um, you know, washed into the lake.
Does that, does that instance, I don't mean to get into the wetlands thing here and the, uh, DEP and all this, but I'm just curious. Is that really a steady state or is that like anything that's more churned up and such? And the occurrence should be taken with, uh, readings at a steady state as opposed to as after an event or something like that?
I don't know enough about it to know, you know. I know our, our water quality is always good, but, um, you don't know what the worst of it, you don't know when it's the worst. You know, and how long it takes to recover after a, a heavy rain.
So, Mike, uh, you and I had touched base earlier. You had stated that it looked like, um, that there was some distinction, and not to pit Janet versus Jerry in any way here. Uh, some distinction between the Lake Chaffey responses and the Ashford Lake responses? There was some, some discernible difference?
When I was looking before, it, um, it sort of seemed like, yeah, there, there might be a little bit of a difference of opinion as far as what the next, um, what the commission should allow. And I know that when I spoke with the Health Department, they have a much higher instance of septic failing on one of the lakes versus the other, because I think I mentioned last time, the development, it was largely filled wetlands, which just caused septics to fail. Um, but, you know, the other thing that might skew it a little bit is that we, we have, uh, you know, a third more responses from Lake Chaffey than we do from Ashford Lake. So that might skew it too, because there's, there was more responses. But I'm going to see if I can, if I can dump it into an Excel document and, and get a little bit more information pulled out to see if there really is a clear distinction between the opinions of those that live at one lake versus another.
I, um, I always like to know the N number when it comes to data. Do we have an N number? I know there's about 240, 244. Uh, um, either residents or listed residents for Lake Chaffey. Do you, we know what the, uh, total number, uh, the potential total number of respondents would have been?
I, I don't know that. I don't know if, if the, the board would have that information.
Janet, you don't happen to know Lake, uh, Ashford Lakes, uh, group there, do you? What your populace is?
Not off the top of my head, no.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
I can find out.
Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, I think it'd be pretty straightforward for Janet and Jerry, since they're both active in, in the Lake Districts to get those numbers.
Yeah, I can get the numbers.
Yeah, I remember Mike saying like 240 or something, so. Before, so.
It's about 240 here at the Lake Chaffey.
Yep, that's what I thought. Okay, so, um, when we deal with the issues that are pertinent to the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, we look at the lot size, because we have started talking with Greg's, uh, uh, setbacks and things like that that are appropriate. Um, whereas right now, I guess what, 56% felt we were, uh, restrictive, um, too restrictive. 40% said they were appropriate, 5% said not enough. So kind of a 50/50. It's close there, 10% difference in, uh, the respondents there. So, uh, obviously, I think that's, I think it is something both from the standpoint of, uh, uh, when we go down to density and all for impervious surface and all. But when we look at what needs to take place when it comes to not having, uh, the board, planning and zoning circumvented and going right to zoning board of appeals, um, because of a, uh, a hardship, if you will, just based on the property. Um, I, I, I guess I'm just making the point, I think it's a good thing for us to look at the, um, setbacks for each of these, what they should be for the lake, as Mike started to put together and, uh, Dick was reviewing also. Um, and the whole group actually was reviewing. Um, you know, what that should be when it comes to the lake properties, uh, compared to your normal, uh, 95,000, uh, square foot, two-acre location. Um. So that's, that's one area, obviously. The layout density, uh, I have here, uh, allowing for minor increases, uh, appropriately developed. And one, one and four, uh, was too developed. So, um, I think that's an area we can look out to, especially when it comes to impervious surface, uh, storm runoff, things like that. I think we're going down the right road there. Um.
Yeah, Jeff, I would add that the most important thing for us to focus on is the impervious sur, surface. Because as you put, accessory buildings, you pave the driveways, that adds to the impervious surface. We can regulate impervious service better than we can all of those other developmental issues. Uh, if we make sure this goes through the, uh, Eastern Highlands Health District for any physical expansion, I think then they can handle that. So if someone puts a new bedroom on or a new bathroom on, that's going to increase what's required for the septic system. If the septic system cannot, uh, handle that, then that means that permit would be denied. So, you know, so regulating on those areas rather than on height and, and other developments and a lot of the things in the survey puts us more in a impartial, uh, position rather than trying to micromanage it. I personally would find it, uh, and I think one of the people from Lake Chaffey stated this when it was at one of our previous meetings, that they don't like the idea of someone that's on the lake putting up a, uh, three-story building that blocks the view of other people. But then again, I'm not sure that, that we want to get in the middle of that. They can handle that maybe with their own association rules and regulations.
No, I, well, can I just say, um, that was one of the things I wanted to bring up because, um, if the Ashford Lake Board, um, didn't feel that we should restrict the height. But, you know, with, for all the houses that are on the lake, and there's a lot of small ones, if they go up, they're going to block somebody else's view. So I don't know if there's any way that we can write the regs so that they can't do that unless the neighbors agree or something. I don't know how to, how to protect people's views.
I guess, Janet, I was, uh, I do not know the, uh, legalese of the association's rules, but I would assume that they're able to be.
Because the, the, uh, the rule, the covenants are in everybody's deeds. So in order to change them, you have to change the deed of everyone in the association. So, um, changing them is not really feasible.
Okay. Well, you know, I, I can empathize with someone that is, you know, two or three rows back, that's got the view of the lake, and all of a sudden, someone takes a 800 square foot, uh, place and turns it into 2,400 square foot. I went up three, three stories and blocking their view. Uh, I think it'd be something that the commission would, you know, uh, consider to see if we could do it in a, in a way that would be fair. Uh, but, but again, I, I think we don't want to get to the point of trying to micromanage what can and not be done at, at the Lake District.
Well, I think, I think a man, you, you call it micromanage, but I think whatever we do now for non-lake residents and commercial areas, we need to apply the, not the same rules that we're, you know, we're trying to tailor this somewhat. But we need to apply, uh, similar, uh, guidelines along those lines where, uh, you know, certain height requirements that affect things, uh, the footprints, um, what you can or cannot do. You know, obviously, the Eastern Highlands requirement on a site plan for approval to make changes and such like that. And that's just more important when it comes to, as you talked about, the impervious surface. For number two, leads right to the water quality issues of number five in this. So those two are, uh, kind of together. Um, it's also, I'm not saying we've got a mandate, but we get 63% of the respondents stating that, uh, either allow, self-allowing increase or a partial increase to the height is an allowable, uh, situation on the lake. So I think they're looking for, uh, allowable, but I can hear Janet saying, you know, a limit to that so that it doesn't become, uh, you know, Trump Tower or anything, literally just, I mean, you know, any skyscraper, so to speak. Um. So I say, again, I think, I think we can do, put on the same type of rules and regulations and deal with other locations in town, just applying it in a, this microcosm that is the Lake District.
If, if you made the height a special permit that would give the abuddas a chance to come in and weigh what they think or don't think?
Right, an opportunity to, you know, uh, give their input. And, uh, and again, I think what we'd have to do is put out, um, uh, considerations that we take as opposed to it inconveniences them. Um, what is the true effect? I mean, can they show, uh, uh, land value, devaluation? Um, can they show, uh, an impedance is to their, uh, ability to enjoy the property or anything, something along those lines? Again, I'm getting into some nebulous areas that, uh, are more, uh, subjective than objective.
Yep. So, so I, I would summarize all this, Jeff, is that we should regulate the percentage of impervious area. Uh, we should regulate, uh, via special permit, any increase in height that would give the abuddas a chance to. that would give the abuddas a chance to weigh in on it. And we should also make sure that the Eastern Highlands Head Health District has the ability to weigh in on any permit that expands the bedrooms or bathrooms for any additions.
So, um, I have a question that maybe Mike can answer. Um, if we, if we make a special permit to increase your height and we deny it because all the neighbors are up in arms and going nuts over it, can they take us to court? I mean, is that a good enough reason to deny it legally?
So my guidance will be not to go down that road of special permit for height because I can't think of any situation where you would not have everyone else saying, don't, don't approve it. And my guess is all the reasons why they'll tell you not to approve it are exactly what you're talking about. My, you know, you shouldn't allow someone to improve their property because it's going to affect my view. And at the end of the day, when you buy a piece of property, you, you should know what others around you can do. And I think it's going to put the commission in a really tough spot to constantly hear from those neighbors. And if you're doing abuddas, there could be many. So I would think that a very clear metric for when these things would be allowable would probably be more fruitful than us having to throw a special permit, public hearing process together for someone who wants to have a second floor. Because right now they can't. Um, and and it's not coming before the commission and, you know, I, I, unless the commit, I think you're going to either be in a situation where you, everybody leaves angry because you've approved it, or everyone you see, you deny. So then there's really no point, you know, I I I struggle to figure out how you tease out what you would be comfortable with and what you wouldn't be. And maybe you know that list and maybe we can come up with that criteria, but I'm, it gives me a great error to.
That's kind of the road I started going down, opening my big mouth. And I realized, you know, as I said, some of those reasons become uh, very similar to the zoning board of appeals and what constitutes a withdraw, a hardship. And it can't be financial, um, you know, does it impact access due to a disability? That would be a viable situation. Um, but I can't see how a, a second floor makes it uh, less ad, less available for a uh, disabled person to uh, go up because you should be putting it on the first floor anyways, you know, those types of things. But again, there are, there are, there are instances, but they are probably few and far between. But I can see your point, Mike, where why make a rule that you're just going to deny all the time anyways? And get the wrath of that or the potential lawsuit of that, as you said, Janet. Um, so it is something for us to look into and go through uh, as we develop these.
Jeff, you know, my two cents worth is that if I have a beautiful view of the lake and I'm, you know, one level back or two levels back and someone builds a three-story you know, addition onto their new property and it gets to the point where uh, I can't see the lake anymore. The value of my property has been diminished by that. So special permit, I'll, I'll agree with Mike is probably not the right way to go. But I think it's some way that uh, this uh, impact on the neighbors needs to be considered at some point. And and I'm not, not sure the best way to do it. We can't say no increase in height, or we can't say unlimited increase in height. There's got to be something that we can say that gives the ability of the abuddas a chance to weigh in on it happening.
The um, then the draft that we have has a note that says building height may not be increased over that of the exist, existing building when rebuilding. But I think that there's, somehow we should have a, a rule for the people who are on the lake that's different from the people who are off the lake, it seems. I don't know how to do it. I don't know.
I think we won't solve that tonight in this discussion. I I would say, Mike, why don't you take what we've talked about here and come up with what you think might be a, a solution? I do know, and I think I mentioned this previously, that friends of mine uh, bought two uh, lakefront properties in Coventry and they proceeded to put a four-story building on those properties uh, with, complete with an elevator, no less. And the people behind them brought suit against them because it diminished the value of their property. And the people behind them ended up winning the lawsuit. So there, there is a legal aspect of, of people doing something that diminishes the value of your abuddas. So I don't know, we can do that with the regulations or we just do it as it, as it happens in the future?
This is Mark Schubel. I just have a quick question while we're on the topic. Any, any recent building approvals that have come through? And and I'm just thinking that there have been, you know, some that are taller than they originally were. How would that impact? You know, rules going forward? I mean, does that set any type of precedence if they've occurred in the last five years?
The one that comes to mind most, and I'm not su, and I have to go back to my notes. I don't have them in front of me. But the, the property that has been greatly expanded, it's kind of kitty cornered across from the old Ashford package store. But that one has gone up uh, at least two and a half, maybe three stories. And uh, it, it originally was a very small building with a bunch of outbuildings. And I believe it went forward for expansion without going through any special bu, building permits. I recall asking Michael Gardner about it and he said, oh, well, you know, they had, you know, a, a number of accessory buildings. And they combined the accessory buildings with the initial building and used that to, to put in place the building that's there now. And that's a good example of something that's, it, it doesn't have any buildings directly across from it. But it definitely has gone up much higher than what was there originally.
And this, I don't know how that was, Dick, I don't know how Mike approved that house.
Yeah, I, I don't know either.
It's, the thing is, what it doesn't do, you know, based on what we've just been talking about here, not to go round and round on this, but what it doesn't have is it doesn't have a building behind it looking towards the lake. It is the building behind, if you will.
There, there's several others uh, going towards the old Smithy's that have also gone up a, a story or a story and a half that do block some of the uh, people across the street. So I mean, it's, it's a, it is something I think that is happening and I think the, one of the uh, officials from Lake Chaffey Association that was on this call before was raising that as, as a concern. So we won't solve it tonight, but I think that's going to be an issue that'll come up in the future.
And to answer your question, Mark, I don't, I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
I, I was just going to say, I mean, that property has come up a couple of times. It's not, this is, it's not clicking for me, uh, because we don't regulate coverage right now in the residential zone. So impervious coverage percentages, we don't, we don't get into. And, and whether you have a hundred you, uh, accessory buildings or not, you, there's no rationale that gets you to an addition. So I think what might be good, since this property has come up so many times and people are aware of it, why don't I look in the file and see what happened? And if, if you all are able to look at that and say, we're not comfortable with that, then perhaps we can use that to back into some rationale for what the regs ought to say, because we, we know what that looks like and we know that the parameters by which that was designed are perhaps too much. So we want to start there and move in. Um, so let me see if I can pull some stuff on that property that might be helpful. And maybe I'll come up short, but it's, I feel like it might be worth investigating.
So to, so to use a very, very poor, non-PC example, what you're talking about is uh, the famous quote, I don't know what pornography is, uh, I can't describe it to you, but I know when I see it.
That's right.
So we can, we can use that as an example of what we don't want to have, so to speak.
Exactly.
And again, to answer your mark, your question mark, I don't think there's a precedent setting. Obviously, uh, efforts like that would be grandfathered in. Um, but if we apply, if we now input and start um, zoning regulations, then from that point on, but there's nothing that uh, would allow for a precedent to override what our new regulations are and what we put in.
I mean, I was just thinking that, you know, if I was going to fight it, I would look for examples around the lake that have been allowed in the past and you know, if I was a property owner, that's what I would use, you know, for my attorney to fight for my rights.
Well, again, it would, it would have to do with what the current, with those current regulations and what they're operating.
Sure. No, 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 I understand.
Yeah. Uh huh. Okay.
Down in Dominican Republic, down in Punta Cana, I was down there on vacation and uh, they have a building code down there, the high-rise uh, resorts. No building can be built taller than the tallest palm tree. I thought that was a pretty good idea.
I don't know how many palm trees we have in Ashford.
Oh, we have trees.
No, no taller than the Ashford oak.
There you go.
Okay, so Mike, you're going to, um, as you, as we discussed, you're going to try and move forward with some of these. You're going to look at that plan to give you a basis to start on some of these issues and uh, start to look at the regs again, based on the input you have here.
Yeah, I'll try to pull, I'll try to kind of use this and take the regs and kind of address this environmental component that we're dealing with and and um, I'll look through a couple of other towns. I can't remember where it is, but I know there's one place that allows for an expansion of up to twenty-five percent of the building size, one time. So the regs get adopted in twenty twenty-two, you get a one-time expansion on the water of twenty-five percent of your building area. And whether you go up or whether you go out, you're, you're limited twenty-five percent of this, the current size. Um, and what, once you use it, you use it.
So I mean, I, I would focus on the impervious area because that really impacts more than the building size. Because if they move the, they do the size, uh, they're going to have to get past the Eastern Highlands uh, requirements because the additional size, unless they're just putting a bigger family room, it's more than likely going to put another bathroom or bedroom in. And that's going to, you know, bump up against the septic requirements. So it's.
And I agree, I agree with what you're saying, Dick, in that, you know, one of our most important things we need to do is obviously protect the, the environmental area, protect the areas in and around the lakes and the effect of that. And if someone, as long as someone does follow the Eastern Highland Health District and have a suitable and appropriate septic system that works and a failure backup and all those things that are needed, then, you know, our, our goal isn't so much to limit what someone wants to put on one of those areas as it is to limit their effect in and around the area.
So Mike, have you got all that?
Oh, yeah. Heck, yeah. Okay, very good. Thank you all for the input on that. Um, the next issue is uh, just open discussion on the affordable housing and the status of the bills in process. Um, Mike, I don't know if you have any type of, not to put you on the spot again. Um, if you have any type of synopsis or anything, I know there's a number of bills um, that have been offshoots of ten twenty-four. Uh, many with similar topics or topics dealing with both affordable housing and training and um, uh, compliance in the municipality and such. Uh, is there any uh, elevator statement that you have for us?
I don't have much. Um, some of the bills have been gutted, um, related to some of the um, you know, like you heard about, like the quote unquote mansion tax and some of these other things, some of the fair housing stuff. Um, and and to be honest, because right now everything's kind of under wraps and we don't know where, where things are going to go. It's kind of been mum's the word. Um, I, I haven't heard anything as of yet, a, as far as if any of the language has been adjusted behind the scenes. Um, and and any of the people that I know are unaware of kind of where they stand. I don't know if I had been told that, that the people that were really pro all of these topics um, felt that the bill wasn't strong enough. It didn't kind of go far enough. And the people that were against it obviously are against it. So there's some concern amongst those that are pushing the bill that the people that were for it aren't really, really for it anymore because it's not necessarily that strong. And so it may kind of just fall in the middle. So I, there's not really been much that I've heard of.
I, I had got Alex's uh, e- email relative to this meeting and I responded to it as I could. I, I get probably three or four emails per day from the various groups that I've been following in terms of demonstrations and in terms of op-eds. And I, I sent uh, probably one of the best con- compilations of that to you, Jeff, and Alex and Mike. Too late to dis- distribute to the group, but basically there is a groundswell of uh, opposition to these bills. And it, it's like trying to uh, be opposed to a chameleon. Because as soon as opposition to A is there, someone proposes a change to B. And so it's, you know, it, the, the whole issue is, are you uh, for or against the state uh, controlling the uh, local control of, of zoning? And by and large, I've seen no one from towns or cities that really is for that.
Okay, Dick, that you have to stop right now. I'm sorry, please, because you are, you are painting a very one-sided picture of this. Because I looked at the material that you sent me and I'm sorry, that was all very one-sided. Okay, if you go look for people that support this bill, you will find people that support this bill. If you don't go looking for it, you won't go finding it. You'll go find people of a similar or a uh, opinion that meets the criteria you're looking for. Okay? What I'm talking about right now is really not one side or the other. I'm talking about what's in the legislature now. What bills are being proposed and what the potential status of those bills coming through are. I can tell you right now in calling up ten twenty-four, there are an associated one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen other bills that have been generated on either as uh, other bills with similar topics as they're identified. That is factual. Okay? As you, as you even described it yourself just now, you said they were opinion ed pieces. There's an opinion ed piece in the Hartford Current this past Sunday that was favorable toward the Affordable Housing Act. Okay? So it's not that, you don't have to go that far spelunking to find one side or the other on this. But we need to maintain status. We need to maintain an impartial status on this. Okay?
In all due respect, th- there is one overriding aspect of this. Do we, as Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission, want the state to mandate what?
The state already mandates what we do by statute. They, they, it's not a, it's not a home rule state. We went through this the last time. Okay, what I don't want to do is make this a political discussion on one side or the other. I want to deal in facts. I want to deal in the pro, the legislation that's proposed and what has a potential effect on us. Things like if they have training and required training of the uh, zoning commissions and zoning personnel, what's on the docket for right now? They're talking about four hours for each member, two hours of which is in affordable housing. And it needs to be registered with the municipality so that they can send it on to the Department of Housing so that everyone is a certified uh, member of the board. That has a direct effect on you and me and the rest of the members. Okay? I'm not looking for opinion pieces. Uh, people can go and find their own opinion pieces on whatever website they want to go to. But this is not the place for it. We've had this discussion regarding leaving your political stance at the door. And this is not where we want to go.
Jeff, in all due respect, my comments are not political. My comments are talking about home rule versus state rule and I.
And we are not home rule. Dick, we are not home rule. We are state rule. Everything we do is based on the Connecticut State statute.
There is a Connecticut State statute that provides the framework for what we do. But we then hold uh, special, you know, meetings, we pass on things, we don't uh, give a rubber stamp to a developer coming into town to build a, a, a development in town without the ability to hold a public carrot. And there's a lot of the stuff.
We do do a rubber stamp for single, single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings.
Because they're codified in what, in our regulations. So I, I, I'm not sure what you want to do here. If, if you do not want Ashford Plan So I, I, I'm not sure what you want to do here, i- if if you do not want Ashford Planning and Zoning to take a position on this. That's fine. We, we won't take a position. It's not going to make a difference of, uh, at all. But my own personal.
I don't think there's a position to take as of yet. And again, in speaking with our legal counsel, it was wait and see. What we are trying to do is just to make the members aware of the legislation that's out there. I encourage them all to look at, the legislation is there, forming their own opinion on what the material is. If you need to find other opinions from other people, that's your personal choice to do that, but that's not what's going to show up in this meeting.
That's fine. I, I, I don't disregard it. You put this on the agenda. And I sent you something that was a, uh, summary of some of the things that had been written recently. Uh, whether you want to call it partisan or not, they were in various news organizations. I mean, I, I, I don't know what others say. Ashford probably is not going to be affected as much by this as a town like Tallinn or South Windsor. Because we don't really have that much ability to build these facilities here. But the, the legislation that is out there with various amendments. Does state that Ashford should develop a certain percentage of its housing stock as affordable housing. Within a one point five radius of what is considered the center of the town, which would, in our case, be Warrenville. And could we possibly have anyone build? And I think the number I I pulled out was like fifteen hundred new apartment units within Warrenville. I don't know who in heaven's name would ever occupy those. It's probably not feasible. But that's what this regulation talks about. And and I don't think that's good for the town, and I don't think it's good for the state. So if, if you are against doing this, I don't have a problem with it. We can just put this on the back burner. But that doesn't mean that any of us as a person, i- individuals can not. Oppose this, as are many, many, many people within this state right now.
Can I say something?
Please, Janet, go right ahead.
Oh, thank you. Um, I don't even know where to start. Well, first of all, I just want to say that if you're following any of the legislation in Hartford, right now, it's all, it's the sausage-making stage. It's all being amended and changing, and you never know what's going to be the final product. So it's not unusual that this bill is making all these changes. If you read through what Mike sent us, um, I don't see anything in there that's really alarming. And it's, it doesn't say that we have to build this, it's just saying that if a developer came in and thought that. They could make money by building low, low-income housing, we should make it, um, allowable for them to do. Which I don't think is a bad thing. I would like to make a correction from something that was said la- last month. This bill does not have any penalties in it. The penalty is, um, from, um, eight thirty G. Which is a longstanding statute that says that municipals that have less than ten percent of housing. Um, dedicated as affordable can be subject to a lawsuit. If somebody is unable to build affordable housing, I think that's the basic of it. And that has been in so long that it's actually in our P O C D. So, um, that's, that's been in, I don't know how long before that, it's been part of the law.
Eighteen eighty-nine.
Yeah, Janet, I, I think I will concur with the first statement you made. This is like looking at a sausage factory. These bills are being morphed, th- they get on a committee. And now they're into the legislature and what's going on is behind closed doors. What comes out, who knows? I don't believe that Ashford Planning and Zoning is going to be able to impact this one iota. So I don't think spending our energies deciding what we support and don't support makes any difference. I brought all this up to the commission because I thought it was something that was, that disturbed me. In terms of state control over local issues. And yes, Jeff, there is a statute that outlines what is controlled and not controlled. But it leaves significant amount of leeway to local zoning. And this takes away a lot of that leeway. Whether it all comes to pass, I don't know. I do know that there is a groundswell of demonstrations and oppositions against it. I don't see as much demonstrations and oppo- and and support for it.
You have to stop saying that because I see the other side all the time. I see demonstrations, I see webexes, I see all these things. You're making these grandiose, I'm sorry, opinionated statements that are one-sided. Because there is the activity on the other side, you're just blind to it.
Jeff, okay, with all due respect, I will acquiesce to what you've been reading, but I'll tell you. We, we can't debate.
I'm not, I'm not looking to do a support or not a support on this, because there was, as, as Janet identified, there was nothing to support yet. What there simply is, is where they are, what's in the legislation, what's being discussed. Those are the types of things we should be talking about. Um, but to make a stance on this, to move forward one way or the other, because there are two sides to every story. Is really not the place for the planning and zoning right now.
I, I, I think you're reiterating what I just said. I said, A, this is not something for Ashford Planning and Zoning to take a formal position on. I put it forth last month, we decided not to do that, I respect that. So let's not rehash what was discussed before. As far as pros, cons, or otherwise, uh, all I was attempting to do is what I sent you and. And and Alex and Mike is information that I had access to, and I've got much more than that. But that's, and it's not political, they're, they're simply statements of what people have done or not done. There are people that are for this for sure, you know, uh, you know. Mayor Luke Broner and his wife are out there putting forth statements for this left and right. You know, I mean, but I don't think Ashford Planning and Zoning is going to be able to affect this one iota. So I think I would recommend that we.
Agree with you, hundred percent.
We, we would take this off our agenda, you know, unless you want to simply have information going out to the members. And you can put forth whatever you've heard, Jeff, I'll put forth right off there and we, we, we can go from there, because.
Oh, no, you can't, no, you cannot put forth whatever you feel to put out to members. Anything you're putting out to the members needs to go through the chair.
Okay, well, Jeff, I'm, I'm simply saying. Whatever people want to hear is fine. We're, as far as a commission, we're not going to make an impact on this.
I, I agree, the first statement you're saying there, I agree with you a hundred percent, that we will not have an impact on this.
So, I mean, so, yeah, this, but I think that.
Can we get back to our schedule?
We are, we are still on the topic, Jerry.
I mean, this, this is Mark Schnobel. I mean, my recommendation until there's, um, a piece of legislation that's going to be voted on. I'm not sure why we're, why we're having a discussion, if it's still as, as everyone said in the sausage-making stage.
My intent was to share information to the board members. If they will, if they, if the board feels that, um, putting it on the agenda in any way, shape or form is not helpful to them. That, uh, sharing of what the legislation is or what those amendments are is not, is something they could rather do on their own. Beautiful, great, I appreciate your efforts and your movement on that. If, if you feel that this isn't the forum for it, we're happy to not put it on the agenda.
Uh, Jeff, I would recommend we take it off the agenda.
That's absolutely fine, until we have something either from, uh, the legislature or our legal team. Will, we will not have a further discussion on this.
Well, by our next meeting, the legislature should be over, so we'll have a bill or not a bill.
Right, right, and as to where we need to move forward, because after come the next meeting, we can start talking about if we need. The only way this would go on for next meeting is that if we have something from the legislature, uh, some movement for us to do. And part of that would be how we're going to work with Mike and his company for developing our, uh, regulations moving forward come July one. To have something in place, if required, to have something in place for next July.
Yeah, and Jeff, I would, uh, separate the issue of an affordable housing plan. From this whole thing that's going forward. We need, we need to develop an affordable housing plan, it's required by existing state legislation. And and Mike and his company are working to do that. This other issue of other legislation going through the state or not going through the state is no impact on that.
I agree with you, I agree with you.
So I know that we've all, I, I know where, I know where we all are right now with this discussion. But the one thing that I will say is the most recent version of this bill has had the two things removed. One, the requirement or the, the, uh, incentive or mandate that, that developments be, um. Established arou- around transit stops, which Ashford does not have. The other piece that was removed was, um, what Dick was mentioning about developing units within town centers. That piece was also removed from the most recent version, so neither of those are in play.
And and Mike, both of those are in play of being put back in again. That's where this sausage-making thing, but I don't want to belabor that. But I do want to encourage that we get forward of getting our affordable housing plan done. And you, you and your company are doing that.
We will be.
We would, they will be, we still have to write up the contract and such, and then have a, uh, effective date with July one of the new budget, so. Okay, very good. Any other discussion from anyone on this? Never, never again, yes, Jerry? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to new business and the, uh, zoning regulations codification. And we've got on the stage again, uh, Mike DeMato.
Um, so, and I just realized this, this didn't make it into the packet, um, so we can do it. Well, ideally, if we could do it on the fly, would be great, and I can type something up. Basically, way, way, way back, I went through the, um, I went through the legal analysis. Basically explaining just the very, the few, they weren't changes, but inconsistencies between different sections. Where we use different terminologies to, to reflect the same word, or we had a statutory reference or something that was changed. Um, so we're at the point now where the commission, or the commission, um, the town clerk has gone through everything. Halloran Sage has reviewed everything, general code has reviewed everything. And we're ready to take the complete set of documents, inland wetlands regulations, the zoning regulations, which we, which we obviously updated last August. And the complete set of town ordinances to town meeting for full final codification. Which will essentially create one, one, um, piece of content, which will be online. Um, if you've ever gone to Mansfield, for example, that's what they use. Um, and accessible so that the regulations will be an appendice, an appendix to that, along with the inland wetlands regs. And so you'll be able to search terms, you'll be able to binder sections together and email them, you'll be able to share links to sections. You'll be able to move through the document and click on titles and, and, you know, the table of contents, it will become interactive. So all, everything's done, you guys looked at stuff months and months ago. So we're like at the ninety-nine yard line, um, and ready to, to get this all taken care of. So basically, the, the only thing that we need for, from the commission is just a, a, a motion to acknowledge the codification. And that it will be, um, effective upon approval at town meeting. So I can type a motion up really quick for you. But if you want to read, but that's all we pretty much need.
Yeah, Mike, uh, we had, uh, put it in, in the land use regulations. And we also put it into the, uh, ordinances in terms of the fee ordinance. That is in the, that is in there correct now.
Yeah, so that would be, yeah, so the fee ordinance would be part of what the town clerk has worked through on, on her end. And I remember there being some back and forth, but in my mind, I boiled it down to there weren't any issues, so I believe everything's taken care of.
Well, you know, the key thing is, we thought it was there, then it wasn't there, and a lot of back and forth. Just want to make sure that in, indeed is there. And the language has been passed back and forth several times. And this is the one with the, uh, fee ordinance for big projects, you know.
The technical consulting fee.
Yeah.
So I will verify tomorrow, I will verify that that final version, which I received a copy from Chris Abikoff of what was adopted. I will verify that's in there and all squared away, but I believe that it's all set.
So, Mike, you are looking for a motion that you could always write up later to put in to the, uh. Minutes for Valerie.
Yeah, I just, I just need.
Of approving, approving the codification and moving to town meeting for approval.
Right, basically, the commission, um, accepting the in- inclusion of the regulations. As, as approved, um, for codification at town meeting.
I, I would be willing to move that.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Richard. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved, thank you, Mike.
Alright, so Valerie, I will write up the motion and I will send it tomorrow if you need me to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, second to last item, uh, zoning officer report. Mike, anything to report?
Um.
App or something?
I'm pulling my hair out with zoning complaints, the property I talked to you about that we thought we may have to go to. You know, legal enforcement on, um, we won't, um, that's been, uh, taken care of. Uh, I think it's on Cushman, I think it was Cushman. Um, so that, we, we sent the friendly, the friendly coaxing letter from, from Halloran Sage that says. Please listen to town staff, we don't want to have to take this any further. And, uh, oh, by the way, please listen to town staff, and they did.
Was that, was that the trailer on the side of the road?
Yes, there was a very large motorhome that was on right up against the side of the road. They removed most of it, but the chassis remained, and we just couldn't get anything taken care of, so that's now been completely removed. So we've, we've got that, I am in the final stages of working with Permit Link to get the zoning, administrative zoning permits. Into the online system. I believe I mentioned Katie in our office is working, uh, set up some, uh, a filing system. Um, we're working on digitizing all the, the, our office's records. So now, um, if you need a property file, we have a PDF with all the documents listed. Um, and so we'll be working to make those available, we're exploring different options. But, but trying to, to bring that service to people that can't make it to the office. So those are keeping us busy along with everything else that we're working on. The only other thing that I would mention, and, um, I, I, I guess it could have come in under correspondence. But just to put on everybody's radar, we did receive a text amendment application, so it was received on Friday, today is the official received date. So we will have a public hearing, um, in June, and it was, I referred it to NICOG last week as well for comment and to CROG. Because, um, it will affect, um, areas within five hundred feet of Wellington, and Wellington's part of CROG. So just to put that on your radar.
Okay, you said you're pulling your hair out with, uh, um, uh, um, Ashford, uh, excuse me. With, uh, zoning, uh, not so much permits as, uh, complaints. Is there, is there anything we can do to assist you on that?
You could abolish the zoning regulations.
What do we look like, Eastford?
Yeah, well, I feel like once a week I say, why didn't, why, why don't I just go to Eastford? No, um, you know, I think it's just that time of year and, and things kind of, I think, sat on pause because of COVID. So now that things are kind of getting back to normal, we've just gotten a number of calls, and so we're working through those and trying to get inspections done. And, and there's just a lot of really complex issues, um, that deal with, you know. Health and fire and, and building and zoning, so it's takes a lot longer to work through them, but, um, we're, we're getting there, chipping away.
I do know that, um, and I can share this with the group here, is that the, uh, as. I do know that, and I can share this with the group here, is that the, as part of the Board of Selectmen's meeting and minutes, that they are in process of talking about both noise and blight ordinances.
Yay.
You had public comment time before, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I know. I'm sorry. I unmuted by mistake.
That's okay. Not a problem. It will be a long haul, obviously, but they are starting discussions on that. So.
Yeah, Jeff, I had gone down that road once before, probably five years ago. What is the issue with Upton Road? That seems to have been the item to, to put this over the top.
Upton Road? Oh, you mean across, across from Upton Road?
Yeah.
Oh, no, there are a number of other areas that have had complaints and things like this that actually are bringing this more to a head than that area. It will probably fall into this, but there are other areas in town that have really brought this to fruition.
Yeah, Briar Lee has been the subject of a lot of discussions on the Ashford Community Facebook page.
There's, there's more private areas also when it comes to noise and things like that that are going on also. But that's about all I can share.
Yeah, I, I would think our friends on Westford Hill would probably be right along there too.
Sure. Okay.
Question, Mike, what is going on with the old package store on Ferentz Road?
Um, your guess is as good as mine. I've had just about every kind of request for what someone might want to do there. Last phone call that I received, which is not to say this is what's happening there, was someone who wanted to turn it into a residence. It's a non-conforming, it's a non-conforming, you know, use. So that would be going, you know, they'd be, we'd be losing that, that commercial property or maybe some people would prefer to lose it. I don't know. But that was the last discussion that I had.
Someone is obviously there physically renovating the place.
I, I don't know off the top of my head, but, but I, I would.
And I looked at, I looked on the website to see if there was a, a building permit issued for it and I couldn't see one.
Well, you, you might, yeah, the, the first place you might see something, I mean, I don't know what was in there would need to be removed. I know that the building was, had some roof, roof issues, some structural issues that they needed to take care of. But you would go to the Eastern Highlands page because the B100A would be the first step. And so it may be sitting there and their system is online. You can search that as well.
Mike, one more quick question. Um, I've noticed in reading through some of the different documents that come out. Um, and maybe we already have this. Some towns have what, for all intents and purposes, is a pre-hearing where if someone is looking to do a development to find out if it's a feasible situation, if the zoning board will look favorably upon it and such. We, obviously, you know, over a year ago, we used to do something like that on Wednesday nights when people would have a fact finding and would come in and speak to some of the zoning officers and the zoning enforcement officer. But I see towns have a more formal process for this. Would we need some type of procedure like that or would we just meld that into our current meeting schedule?
So statute allows for an informal discussion between the commission and an applicant where they can come before you and say, hey, I'm thinking about building, you know, marijuana, medical marijuana dispensary facility at this property. What do you think? And it allows the commission to say, you know, we think it would be good, but we'd have concerns about traffic or we'd have concerns. So the informal discussion is allowed by statute. It's not binding on, on behalf of either party. So the commission can say they love it and deny it or vice versa. The applicant can represent something to the commission and then file an application that, that changes, that makes changes to that. So I, I can't remember if I, there may have been one or two split times that I suggested that. The problem that we run into sometimes with people with the one meeting per month commissions is that if they go to this meeting, then they have to wait another month to apply and then a third month to be actually heard. And so sometimes the timeframes don't work. But if I had someone come in and said, you know, I'm thinking about this, what do you, what do you think I should do? My suggestion would be that they come before you as an informal. And I, I can't remember if, if that parcel up by the highway, did we do an informal first? I think we might have, no?
I think that was part of, both part of our meetings. We, we didn't have
So this would be part of the meeting. It would just be under an informal discussion. So it's basically a non-binding public hearing that we don't, well, it wouldn't be a public hearing. It would be just between the commission, but open dialogue.
But, but in public, so it's not an executive session or anything. People can hear what's being proposed.
Correct.
Right. But they, there's no action and there's no, no request for statement or anything at that point from them.
Correct.
Okay.
Jeff, all right, two items before we adjourn. Thanks to Mike. He helped us update some of the information. But the ashfordedc.org website is up and running and it has considerable amount of information relative to doing business in Ashford and also navigating the various commissions and processes within Ashford. So I'd encourage everyone to take a look at it. It's ashfordedc.org and it has an updated document doing business in Ashford. Has an updated questionnaire if someone wants to do business in Ashford. They can submit it electronically. So that is, is up and going. The other thing is we talked about last month about working on updating the package to look at what would be done at exit 72. I started on that. Mark Schnobel has volunteered to help on it. And I've got probably three or four states, excuse me, towns information together. And we'll be putting that together to send out to the commission over the next month.
Okay. And if it's, if you need to or want any time on the agendas, obviously, just let Alex know.
Yeah, yeah. Right now, I'm in the mode of getting, if you think back to what we did with the last revision of land use regulations, I, I went through multiple towns and got excerpts of what was going on. I'm, I'm in that same mode right now. So.
And if you do have material that you're sharing, will the commission please send that through Alex? Okay?
Yep, we will do that.
Okay, very good. Okay, it comes to the end unless anyone has any questions for Michael. Anything else?
The only thing that I would mention
Hang on, Jerry.
I just want to put on everybody's radar that we, we are, are a question mark for what will happen for June. So, so when we disperse the agenda, just, just check, you know, what the location says. As of May 20th, a, a full virtual meeting is not legal. So, so just to put that on your mental note so that you don't start looking for a Zoom link or vice versa.
Excuse me?
So you're saying we need to do something come May 20th?
What, what does that mean? We have to meet in person?
It means that if the state, if, if, if one of the bills that, that would legalize a hybrid virtual or virtual meeting is not passed by May 20th, it would not be legal to hold a virtual meeting on May 21st. So your, our June meeting will be completely dependent on what happens.
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yes, Valerie.
You mentioned this package store, but I, I didn't get the address.
It's, uh, it's on, it's on Route 89, Ferentz Road.
Oh, so it's not that little package store right on 89 that went out of business?
Yes, it is. The one where the little small one right across from
Okay.
Ashford Drive there.
Is it 487?
No, it's across from Lakeview Drive.
Lakeview, I'm sorry, Lakeview.
Thank you.
So, so before we adjourn, is there anything keeping us from having in-person meet, an in-person meeting in June?
Well, there's the, there's, there's a location, the opening of the town hall and access to it. The town office building, I should say, or Norton Hall for that matter. So again, most of these answers, we should have answers to most of these by the end of this month. And before we warrant the, the meeting. Anything else from anyone? Do I, Jerry?
Yes.
You got something to say?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Amen.
All in favor? Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you all. Thank you all for your input. Thank you all for your time. Be safe.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.